United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, we talk in heaven, dear Lord God, it is once again that we humbly come before your throne of grace to give your name honor and glory and praise for all of your many blessings you've bestowed upon the citizens of Dillon. Dear Lord God, we ask that you continuously bless our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, and all the department heads on tonight as we gather together to make the decisions for development of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything we do, we pray we carefully give your name glory, your name honor, and your name praise. Let's say in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you everybody for being here at C D A for media. Always been here for the years, always treated me very well, I appreciate that. I've got a motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion.
All right. Motion to approve the minutes on the march level of the regular scheduled meeting.
Motion.
All right. All in favor?
I am.
I have the motion. I approve. Y'all might have noticed the buildings on Hampton are now down. Some permits came through, now Jenny and I were talking about it last meeting, they got it down I think in a day and a half. So thankful for that, I think it's a good thing the council did, I know Family Dollar will appreciate it. The city's website, y'all haven't seen the website lately, whoever is responsible for that, it is quite an enhancement. It's up to date, tells everything going on, it's a top-notch website, so kudos to them did, it's a great job.
Tina.
Tina?
I figured. Tina's brought in there. Can you, can you somehow touch base with McLeod Health and let them know that Dillon exists here other than the hospital?
Yes, sir.
They, I had a lady, they had brought someone over today to look at moving to Dillon as a physician or moving, you know, working in Dillon, and she had, from McLeod Health, had no idea, we had a wellness center, I said, yeah, take a part in wellness center, looking back, she said, you mean the one in Florence? I said, no, I said, the one here, she said, I didn't know you, I didn't know you had one. I said, you're killing. So maybe if they had a positive web, you know, we've got a nice website, maybe, maybe they ought to have access to that instead of looking on the internet and finding out all kinds of bad stuff about Dillon.
Yes, sir.
They'll talk me about that. They'll keep the pictures up to date, St. Patrick's Day event, he does everything, so they're fantastic. Speaking of events, celebrate Maine, I think April 27th, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
April 27th, but that, Long, but that's the car show, Jenny Bryant says they're gonna probably see a hundred cars this year, every year. They parking it all on Main behind the post office down beside the court, to courthouse in the city county complex. And it's for, I want to say Cancer Society or something like that. It's one of the best. Generally you have people from at least five states participate. And we are gonna cook for you.
Yeah.
Beth's is here.
I talked to him today.
Yeah. Dee, put this on your calendar, first annual cornhole tournament. Thousand dollars in prize money, if they're in first place, it'll be on the South Plaza. Glenn and I discussed the location, decided there, we're gonna contract that out, they know what they're doing, we don't. Saturday, May 18th, starts at 12:30, on the South Plaza, forty dollars per team. Just something else to add to activities going downtown, go to your city. Got a lot of response on that, that kind of surprised me. A lot of people play that, a lot of people go out of town to play that, so they're glad Dillon's on the, I guess, the circuit. We look forward to it. I'm trying to contact Mary McDaniel, Glenn, you may need to chime in on this, with Humane Society, Humane Society, I think the Arts Guild is putting on a charity function at the Twin Lakes Gophors. They got, they giving up a pretty good-sized arts community in Dillon. Their members have grown, I know they met with me one day about a year ago, but they're gonna have a band, I don't know the details of it, but it's gonna be a combined program with the proceeds going to the Humane Society, which also proceeds on the cornhole tournament is going to the Dillon County Humane Society. PD Coalition, about that time again, you know, the PD Coalition, if you've never spoke to them or anything about the PD Coalition, it's a wonderful organization for men and women in our county. They got something called Coffee and Conservation Conversation on Thursday, April 11th, from four to seven, at their satellite office down here on 300 North First Avenue. I think we've got something on the agenda with that tonight, Carolyn Blue will brief us on that here shortly. Last, now I'm gonna turn it over, I'll go back to Harmon Park, of course, this is my last meeting, I want, again, I'd like to stress to council, don't, you wanna make an impression on the community fast, inexpensively, for the most part, Harmon Park's where you can, I kinda stayed quiet on that old tennis court over there the last couple meetings, but if you could do something, we could do something with that tennis court, volleyball court, or something over there to bring more people to the park, I think it would be, you know, I don't have, that's hard to second guess, anything you can drive somebody to your park, and that is our main park, that's our satellite park over there, then we got more than just Harmon. That park brings more people than any of them, so we shouldn't have attention drawn to them or away from them. Harmon Park is by far more than any of them. Young and old.
But that would be good, put, you know, you put sand and all that, do the volleyball there, you know, kinda like the beach volleyball thing, but I'll tell you what you're gonna need to do with those nets, you're gonna have to have them spring loaded because they'll be coming across, so it's like, you know.
Something to look at. Just keep that always in front, just, there's not a better way, city can also come to make an impression for the community in Harmon Park. With that said, we have all our hands for the time being.
Well, first I want to congratulate Councilman Washington and Jackson on their victories for reelection, but also want to recognize council member, Ms. Connie Manning, for her service, eight years. Thank you very much for your service to the city. I think this may want to take a picture, yeah. Once again, thank you for probably doing with the city.
You're welcome.
Last but not least, mayor, from the city, we'd like to thank you for your sixteen years of service and all you have done for the city. And I think I stated in my letter to council, both of you leave us in a better place than it was when we got here, so we will appreciate it. Would you like to take a picture, mayor?
Well, you know, that's part of the reason I'm deciding to get a picture. Connie been a clever, she's a noble woman, she has.
Gotta invite your wife, I'll make that picture. Thank you. This past week, I submitted a grant to FEMA for hazard mitigation for stormwater. It was a pre-application that was due April 5th, that has been, excuse me, that has been submitted and been pre, or been approved, next step is now to apply for the actual grant, and the goal is to get some funds, and right now we're requesting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a study of our stormwater. Now, we know that the state is scheduled to come in here in the next month or so to video some of our lines, but at the same time, once that's done, we've got to determine what we need to do. So I think by having a grant through FEMA will help us get someone in that knows about storm drainage, some sort of engineering firm, and give us an idea. It may be a, a study, once it's done, that sits on the table because we just don't have the money to do it.
Then we did that fifteen years ago.
No, longer than that.
And it, it was like twenty million dollars.
So what I'm looking for to do is to give us an idea of maybe on where our water's going, is there something we need to do to get the water out of town?
We can limit it, maybe, I mean, we know that we're not gonna spend twenty million dollars, and that's, that's maybe twenty years ago, so that's probably forty million now. You know, maybe just give them some specific areas that we need to focus on, like, like Main Street and, and maybe in that Virginia Lane area, I don't, you know, I don't know what the priority is.
Well, we, we have, excuse me, we have several different areas, now mind you, as we all know, that we have some areas in town that doesn't take but a little bit of rain and it floods, but we've got to figure out how we can handle sixteen inches, twenty inches, that we, that we've seen here in the last two years due to hurricanes, to move, we know we's, we just gotta figure out a way to get it out quicker. And hopefully by, by getting this grant, not, not saying that we will, but we will apply, there will be a twenty-five percent match on our, on our part, we, that goes back to the reason we put stormwater fee in, to, to help offset some of these things. But that grant's due mid-May, if I'm not mistaken, so we'll have that done and submitted. When they approve those, I'm not sure, I would think early fall, we'd have some kind of idea, if not, if, if we were awarded the grant.
In the camera?
I talked with D O T today, they have submitted their purchase order to the vendor, so just now waiting on the thing.
I'm curious though, Glenn, how much was said with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant? I mean, we got a lot of areas.
It's just the research.
I understand, I'm just wondering, you know, what kind of money we looking at to actually fix the problems?
Oh, well, I have no idea, I mean, it's Dr. Wallace brought it, it was, it actually was done, I think in the early nineties is when that study was done, and it was well in twenty million dollar range, and, but that was going in and replacing every piece of pipe they painted, because we do know there are undersides in certain areas. I don't know if that's something that we're gonna be able to do in our lifetime, but at the same time, we've got to figure out how to get water moving out and quicker, and maybe there's some issues outside of town that we've got to address.
You think there's any money at the state level that we can try to give?
Well, a lot of FEMA grants, and we'll go back to storm, storm damage, you know, anything that we had that got torn up or flooded during the last two hurricanes, FEMA has reimbursed us back seventy-five percent. The state will put in their budget whether or not they'll do twelve percent or twelve and a half percent, and then we're usually on the hook for the other twelve and a half percent, and that usually takes two or three years through their budget cycle. So it's very well possible there could be some, some funds there.
Match on that grant, Glenn, is that, can it be in kind or is it?
Some of it can be in kind, that is correct, yeah, some of it could be. But then, like I said, the state, they have sent their P O to the vendor, now they're just waiting on the vendor to come in to do some digging, and then we'll kind of see what our, what that is. Burke's crowd for the last month or so has been in different areas of town where open ditches are, cleaning those, trying to get ahead of that, but that's, that kind of process is still a, a day-to-day operation that, you know, hopefully we can get enough money set aside where we can hire two people as we talk to do those things, but we have a hundred and twelve thousand, is that right, somewhere in that ballpark? I think somewhere in that ballpark in stormwater fees that we've collected since July, am I right?
No, a hundred and three.
Hundred and three thousand.
Did we, did we pay for the truck?
That came out, we made a payment out of general fund for the truck, yeah, we have one annual payment for four years for that.
And what's it gonna come out of this, Dee?
It will, at the end, at the end of the year, we'll adjust it.
Reimburse it. And what is the timeframe on hiring the crew to start doing the stormwater grant?
I hope to do it off and just come and budget you, but right now, we, what's the annual payment on the truck?
Sixty-two.
So if we've collected a hundred and three in nine months, what is that, about nine thousand?
Thirty. About a hundred and thirty thousand annually.
Yeah.
You've got sixty thousand dollars to pay.
So, I don't know how soon that's gonna, gonna be, but that's the goal, to do that. Just to follow up on the last meeting, I told you that the contractor had begun working on the sewer main that runs from Main Street to our waste work, waste treatment plant beside vocational school that is now completed, went quicker than what anybody or what the contractor anticipated, so the new lines are in the ground, the old lines were completely eaten up. A lot of it was cement pipe, wasn't it, Harvey? So that's been in the ground for forty, fifty years plus, but that portion is now been replaced. Since it's been replaced in the last week, the last little bit of rain we've gotten, we haven't seen a lot of I N I coming in, we've seen less I N I, so we know that fixing that repaired some of the I N I issues, not saying it repaired all of it.
Low, low area.
Yeah, that's, that's down in the swamp area, that is correct. So not only do we get the pipe fixed, but we've cut back on some of our I N I that's going into our plant. And we're starting to work on our budget, which will begin in July, you know, we have two new members coming on, council, new mayor, new council member, will present first reading in our meeting in May, I know we'll schedule for sure a workshop just so those folks can grasp what's going on, because when they first get here, that's gonna be the first thing on their plate, so I know we're gonna have a workshop scheduled probably late May, but the first reading will be presented first in May, and some of the items that we will tackle from a capital purchase type deal is, two months ago, council went ahead and approved the purchase of a new garbage truck, which will be in this new budget, and that is a cost of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, but that won't be a one-time cost because we borrowing the money for that through First Bank, and if I was just asking, Janet, as you remember the particular, it was for five years?
One, we just didn't do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we hadn't done it yet, but we got the quotes from them.
Yeah, and that was on the police card.
That was police card, you're correct, you're correct, that's correct, we haven't done that yet.
Yeah, I got that.
I'm sorry, you're correct, I stand corrected, but we did, we will plan on borrowing two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to purchase a new residential garbage truck. In fact, our oldest garbage truck, which we, the first one we bought in nineteen ninety-nine, no, nineteen ninety-seven, is in Florence, because it was not working, it was our backup, and they estimated it was gonna cost us twenty thousand dollars to fix it, we decided not to fix it, we're renting one for a thousand dollars a week, we took a front-line truck that's, that we use every day, it will come offline tomorrow, as of today, we've got some repairs to make on it, hopefully it'll take us about a week to do that, and once that's done, we'll send this rental back and have about a thousand dollars invested, if we need it again, we can always get it back. And then once we buy this new truck, sometime late summer, early fall, we'll take the truck that's, our number one truck now that's ten years old, and that will be our backup, but I wasn't spending twenty thousand dollars on a twenty-year-old truck.
The old one costs what, a hundred and seventy-five?
Summer.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Just out of curiosity, where do you rent a garbage truck?
We went to a, a private company that sends a garbage business, and they just, we've done some things together, and we're willing to do that, so it's, we contacted the folks that we're, we borrow these trucks from, but they don't have any to rent, so we made a, reached out to these folks out of Marion County.
It's like Waste Management or something?
It's not Waste Management, what is it?
Jordan.
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 So, yeah, that's, that's a hell of a no one. And then we talked about, talking with the town a lot, they have one, they use twice a day, but, you know, theirs is so small, it'd take us forever to pick up, and then they'd be off for two days, so we just decided to go ahead and rent this for, what, a tenth cheaper than what it was gonna cost us, more than that. A thousand dollars compared to twenty thousand dollars, and then put twenty thousand on a truck that in six months we're gonna get rid of, so did think that was a good idea. But that's one of the items that'll be presented in our budget, we also talked about, two months ago, three months ago, with the police department adding two new cars each budget year, which should be an additional cost of seventy thousand, I know we just purchased four.
What's the over the limit?
I think they're still waiting on people to put either the radios in or the lights on, one of the two.
Did you look into trucks?
Yes, and that was one of the things that the enterprise, when we were talking to them initially, they were talking about Civiratos, for instance, that a lot of people don't keep them for five years, they keep them for about eighteen to twenty-four months, turn them back over because they have a good sell value.
Well, I mean, that, that sell value, it goes on after two years. Have we already got a close look on the lights and the radio?
Yeah, I think, I think all of the lights are sitting in the office there.
Turned over seven years. I mean, they've been out there for a couple more.
Yeah, the lights are in the box in the office, radios, I'm not quite sure on that yet, but I will find out where we are on.
That'd be, I, I, I think it's worth looking into, you know, how much you can buy them for, if you buy them involved, you know.
I would think if we did those, we, it would be more getting rid of the Tahos, S U Vs, and, and doing it with the detectives, but Dave and I did talk about it, and he's not here tonight, I think you all know the reason for that, but we'll follow back. Also in the budget, we will present a request from the fire department for roughly fifty thousand dollars for a new integrated air compressor system, and this was what fills the breathing apparatus tanks for fire, the one we got, Chief, is how old?
An early nineties, it was, it was forty-two sixteen bottles, we upgraded to forty-five hundreds, and it's not, it's not N F P A compliant, the fuel station there where you fill the bottles at, has to be concealed, our system, which is out before, just in those two little carrier devices spot, and then we can't get like thirty-eight hundred P S I on airplane balls, so when we fill our balls, we sell them at P S I short, out of the full tank. It's just, it's just outdated, it's, it's just, and we turned it up much before, but it's been a good experience we've had since, I think, early nineties, it's just outdated, and we'd like to say we went from twenty-two sixteens to the forty-five hundred P S I bottles, which gives us more air, more time P S I.
I would, if I was going into a fire, I wouldn't want my three-quarters.
Well, that's all we can get, can't get about thirty-eight hundred anyway, the system we got, forty-five hundred ball, we can't get about thirty-eight hundred P S I, four thousand at the most sometimes.
But that, that'll be in the budget process as well. And then lastly, the mayor mentioned about the building on Hampton Street being torn down, those folks also gave us some quotes on some buildings on East Main Street, across from Council on Aging, and also the Round property. The Round property is a hundred and twenty thousand?
Yes.
I don't know if that's something that we want to deal with.
How many acres is that?
I've not.
Is that all the buildings on the property? That's not a bad deal.
You talking about the Round property?
Yeah.
I think it's about time for that Round property to go, it's been a hassle of a long time.
So we got the quote for that, and then we got a quote for one of the buildings across from the Council on Aging, uh, how much was that, do you remember?
Thirty?
Thirty?
I'm not sure.
Somewhere around thirty thousand, and then waiting on the other quote that butts up to the old medicine shop, what is it now, Title Long Place, waiting on the quote for that one. Then on Main Street, that would be the first one, supposedly the second building, which is owned by Lutheran Williams, is that correct? That one may be sold. First building is in the state, state property.
Is that El Gordon, state property?
Pardon?
El Gordon.
No, that's Madison property, the one directly behind the Title Long, that's their estate.
The ones on Main Street, you told them the other ones were about?
Yes, yeah.
That's the one.
So, once we get the quote on that, we'll present that to that family and see what we can do, you know, we talked before, and it'd be something that I think we'd offer again, is that if they'll beat them over to us, then, you know, we've got the property, if, if we're gonna tear it down, if they can't do something with it.
How long's the hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant?
He said, as long as we needed it to be.
Can you do that?
Well, we, we've all talked to him, so I don't know if he'll give us that property.
Put on tax, then let somebody back.
That is true, but I mean, we still gonna be at a hundred and twenty thousand until that gets us sold, type deal.
Will that property qualify as an until property if we took it over?
Yeah, I think it'd still fall in there.
It's already a certain fair ground.
But what the municipal, municipal, oh, municipal association, won't they help, will they help you get a grant for it? They help, if we, if we did the hundred and twenty thousand and cleaned it up, would they help us grant it to make it a park or something?
It's already been through the grounds process, and so I think it was six hundred and twenty-five thousand that they already spent.
That's what it took to clean it up underground.
Right, right.
You can see.
Yeah, and that was ten, twelve years ago.
Yeah, we had to go a year or two.
Yeah, a year, a year ago. And then if you get a, a grant through the state C D B G grant to demolish any property, we can't do nothing with the property, except keep it ourselves, and you can't build anything on it, you can make it a pass as a park, but if you sold it to somebody, you've got to give that money back to, to the grant processor. So just to let you know what, what those costs are, if you haven't been down Hampton Street, they're heavily different, and we want to see some things, and then I want to go back to some positives, and that, that what we have seen on Main Street, Stephanie Mitchell's G G and Doc's, I just noticed that she has done a great transformation of her building there.
She looks good.
It, it looks good, she told me a week or two ago, since she's done that, she has seen more traffic, so we know that there's, if you do something, you want to see something. And I'm not saying it because he's sitting here, but Steve Johnson's got a building on Main Street that he just does some renovation to, and he sent me a picture the other night with, with the signs on it, the new owner, the lights on the front and the side of the building, it, it looks, he outdid himself. But both, both of those properties were facade grants property, so we know that money that the city has put in, that there are people who are taking advantage, and we see a, a good thing.
I still think the best thing we've done to that facade grant is to put the signs of the foundation.
That was, that was, that was Bridget, that was Bridget Thornton's idea, I thought that was a good idea to.
That's the best thing we've done.
Beanie's idea?
It was Beanie's.
And then I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Are those claims coming with it?
They are here.
We, we ordered some claims, and make sure I'm telling this right, that says that this property received facade grant or something like that, we say just put it in their store window, once they complete it, that way, if people know that, they see our name, and so on and so forth, and so there are some positives there.
So all the money was taken this time?
Well, all of it's been committed, now I don't know that, maybe, has anybody submitted their paperwork on facade grants for reimbursement?
And Agent Fuller's.
And Angie Forrester reported that we paid our.
Okay, so we paid one out of eight.
And Steve Johnson.
Yeah, he's my mom.
Oh, okay. But we still got some that haven't started work yet, which Benny and the bar met with them last weekend. To say, all right, get going, time's running out.
And I saw the one, the old drugstore that got the upfit grant, they started work on it.
He's put in his new windows and, and working on the front there, and then the building down by Council on Aging, he's put in new windows and a door there. So that they're starting to move, and those are two years, excuse me, two years old.
Right.
So we're seeing some movement there and I know on the upfit grants, Dr. Hooker has finished his, which was roofing. And Sally McIntyre, has she started yet?
Yes, she's started.
So she's started on her, so we've got some, some moving going on there. And we will probably, once again, bring back the council for the new budget year, doing these same things, we may suggest changing the dollar amounts. Not sure yet, because we don't know exactly how our revenue stream is gonna be, but I think it is a possibility.
So is the whole bridge current, is it up for sale?
I don't know. Can I kent her out? Not to my knowledge. There, there's not a for sale sign that I know of, do you know anything?
I think it's for the.
That's all I have at this time.
Still under the weather?
Yeah, I was trying to get to.
Continue, she, she's not coughing as bad as she once was, five years.
Still shows up, it's a twelve hour day. Downtown, before, really anything else you wanna add? Anything you want to add?
Um, Glenn had asked me to update y'all, you all about the CDVG grant. And so I talked to the engineers today to get a timeframe. So, right now, we are still in the phase, it's called environmental review. Uh, in the month of February, we had a little bit of a, a problem with the wetland area behind Roses. That is considered a wetland, so they had to, um, get with some of the utility companies. The sidewalk there, instead of being out about five foot from the curb, like the rest of the sidewalk, is gonna have to be bumped up against the highway. And then when you cross, uh, the marriage chapel, down by the marriage chapel, then you'll go back and have a little, uh, green space in between the sidewalk and the road. Um, the timeframe for it is, we expect, he expects the, um, design and permits to be completed by the end of this month. Uh, July first, they expect all permits to be approved by D H E and all other entities involved. July first, he's also gonna advertise the project for construction bids that should go out all over the country probably. August the tenth, they're gonna open the construction bids and begin the contract process. September first, they're gonna start construction, and if all is well, December the thirty-first, we should have our completed streetscape.
Just you.
Has to go.
And that includes lighting as well.
I've got a couple of questions for you, Chris. Um, with the Main Street Festival coming up, um, we got some of the, even our business, like, um, the hair shack, businesses like that has paid their money, their, the business license, they don't have to pay an extra fifty dollars to go on Main Street, correct?
We don't handle any of the vendors with the city, that is handled by the chamber.
If they've already purchased a business license, then you can help with this if you don't mind. They shouldn't have to pay another fee to come to our festival, should it? If they already got their business in the city, they do. Or even if, um, they're paying the five hundred dollars business license to come to our city anytime they want to, they shouldn't have to pay another fifty dollars to come to the festival, correct?
Well, the business license for the privilege of doing business in the city limits, and I don't know if there's any additional fees that the city requires. So we don't require any fees, so.
So the chamber should ask for that one?
Well, they're the ones that put on the, that is a fundraiser for them.
Might be a special event. But the business license has nothing to do with the licenses.
Another question I have is, are there any grants that you've applied for here recently? Are, are there any? You're not applying for any grants, you're not looking to try to help the city, Dylan, get grants, your focus has just been on downtown?
Uh, that's a loaded question. So grants work a lot of different ways, as far as applying for grants for the city, we are a municipality. So there are grants that we qualify for just because we are a municipality. Private business owners will not qualify for the grants that I, um, try to get for the city. It is only for the municipality. Does that answer it?
Well, I'm just saying, like, basically for like the police department, are we trying for, eventually, one day we wanna go paperless with our, um, tickets?
Well, that's out of my scope of work, just to be honest with you. I was hired for downtown, and when I talked with them initially, there's some programs that I've been working with for about twenty years now, that I knew I could bring to the table. CDVG was one of those programs, and I delivered that program for the city of Dylan within ten months. So that shows my level of expertise with that particular program. Um, police I have not worked with. Um, other different grants, it depends on the brand, there's some I have worked with for different entities, there's some I worked with when I was with the county. But my expertise here is, you know, just, um, community development.
So it's basically residential, you don't have a lot of experience in commercial?
No, my, my expertise is not commercial, my expertise is in community development.
And each nonprofit, too, can chime for their grant. Where to look, Theater just got fifty thousand on the grant, I mentioned last Council meeting, what a zero to that. Carol, PD sexual assault, this is the PD section, the section assault awareness month.
Good evening, good evening, my name is Carolyn Bill, and I am the new county service coordinator for PD Coalition. And on behalf of the Coalition, I'd like to personally thank each and every one of you for giving us this time to express our appreciation, your acknowledgement of the necessity of our services. It is the belief of the Coalition that the reduction of family violence and sexual assault, as well as child abuse, is not only a service provider problem, but it's a community effort. Um, for all those that value basic human desires to live free from harm and threat. From July two thousand seventeen to June two thousand eighteen, the Dylan Center provided assistance to seventy-three family violence victims. We assisted thirteen sexual assaults and ten child abuse victims. We have provided three hundred and twenty-three nights of shelter for victims. Since January two thousand nineteen, the Dylan Center has provided services to twenty-nine victims of domestic violence. We filed eight orders of protection and have assisted a child dealing with three sexual assaults. April is sexual assault awareness and child abuse prevention awareness month. The goal of this month is to raise public awareness and educate communities on how to present it. Dylan County presently ranks forty-five out of forty-six counties for the well-being of children. Currently, too many of our children live in environments that put them at risk for negative outcomes. This paints an alarming picture for the future of Dylan County. We'd like to invite you to join us, um, this Thursday, April the eleventh, from four to eight, four to seven, excuse me, for our coffee and conversation. Um, and we're gonna use this time to kinda address some of the needs and some of the things that we can do. We're also gonna provide a demonstration of some, um, self-defense moves that women and other victims can use, and of course, that's all free of charge, which all of our services are. Um, we appreciate you as community leaders and your support of the Coalition's work to end family violence, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you for your commitment to help create a safer environment for Dylan and Dylan County, thank you.
It's like Carolyn said, Dylan County is a high incidence, always has been, ever since my tenure here. And their group does a jam up job helping these women and these children. Helping them get shelters when there's nowhere to go, they come back to the candlelight services, they talk about it, you hear it. They have a place to put them that nobody else here knows where it is, another home. But they, they practice what they preach to a T.
Just this morning, we, as, when I got to work at eight o'clock, we've already had three incident reports.
No one else heard? Do y'all own that house now?
We don't, we don't, and that's one of our concerns also, that, um, if the house is sold, um, we wouldn't have, right now, we have nowhere to go. So we are actively looking for a permanent site.
And the house is for sale?
It is for sale.
Is that just office space?
It's just office space, we do have two shelters, um, one in Florence and the other one in Marlborough County.
But we don't have a shelter here?
We do not. That was one of the things we was talking about today, um, if we can find somewhere where we can have, um, a temporary where, that it be overnight, just somewhere temporary that, um, it'll be a safe place for someone to go who needed to go right now, 'cause right now, it takes us at least, um, two hours to kinda get them, um, get them entered into the system, and then we have to find transportation to actually get them to Florence and to, um, Marlborough County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens of the board, John.
Citizen.
Citizen, did they have a way to pray out for me?
Mr. Wilson? Yes. I want to stand on behalf of the many citizens that, uh, are not able to be in this room tonight, to thank you, Todd, for your many years of service. You will be missed. You had, you've had a great vision for this city, and you've done well. Second thing I wanna talk about is something that has been brought up, um, I didn't know they were gonna talk about it, but I came prepared to talk about it. And that had to do with demolition of vacant properties. Um, during your tenure, and anyone who has been on council since two thousand and thirteen, there have been a number of things done as far as demolition of vacant properties. Glenn, Benny, Bert, I think he's here, um, and Tony Jack, really, uh, deal with the nuts and bolts of getting this done. Uh, over the years, just to give you a few statistics. First year we started, uh, did thirteen, thirteen properties, next year they did twenty-three, next year they did seven, they started in two thousand thirteen. Next year they did ten, next year they did seven, and right now, as of two thousand nineteen, as of now, we've done, they've done three. And they have seven more being advertised. So, a total of sixty-three have been demolished since two thousand thirteen. Uh, all because of your interest and their work to get it done. Um, please continue to stay on top of this. You've, you've talked about Hampton Street, and I've told Benny about three or four different times how much better Hampton Street looks. Um, and you talk about the beautification of the building and so forth, stay on top of it. You talked about a lady, a person, I don't know if it was a lady, was, uh, possibly gonna be employed here. And one of the things, if, if you were moving to a new city for employment and you're looking for housing, you're gonna look around and see what's around you, coming into the city, driving down the street, whatever. So, as we, as citizens, need to look, as we drive down the street, to see what we see as we're going back and forth to home and other places. And ask yourselves, would we want this property on our block, next door to us, or in our community? And citizens of Dylan need to understand that if they have such properties in their area, they can report those to Benny and see what Benny can do about it. I know some of that has been done.
Yes, sir, I got just a few words to say, thank you, Council, for indulging me for this few minutes, and I assure you, just to give you a few minutes, I'm not here in official capacity yet, on a very personal note, and my very comments may cause a strain in me and the mayor's relation, we already know that he doesn't like a lot of attention, something that I've always appreciated about him. Uh, Miss Sarah and Donald came into our beautiful community, I can't remember when, maybe sixth, fifth, seventh grade. And right away, Todd and both Tim had an impact on our age group, and we grew to be best friends over the years. You could see us running up and down Squires Lake, Fourth Avenue, Washington Street, playing sports, every chance we get. A lot of you don't know that Todd's quite the athlete, the public don't know. Uh, but he, white man can jump, Todd's, Todd's nickname was Frog. And he got that because his leaping ability on the basketball court. Uh, and also, that carried on into sports, Todd was a heck of a, a football player, he was one that, uh, combined both finesse and toughness. He was a heck of a defensive end, played tight end, had great hands. Uh, our relationship continued on for years, and so often, when I served as mayor, I'd call and confide in Todd, and sometimes he would confide in me. I assure you, he gave the better advice of the two. Uh, and in my, my, my short tenure here in Dylan County, I continued to pick up that phone, and he was so grateful. Uh, 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 he was so free with his time and giving advice, and again, great advice. We all know Todd is a, a steady hand, I'll, I'll, scenario that I won't go into, but I've seen him come out of a corner before. So make no mistake, the mild-mannered, uh, fellow he is, he can come out of a corner, and he's done that in many ways in business. So Todd, I, I just wanna say, um, I've admired you so much, even though you're my peer, I've, I've, I've actually looked up to you over the years. You have guided this city, and you've had a wonderful council, I've watched you all, and y'all, y'all do great work. You're a shining beacon in this town, and I appreciate you, and you've supported him, even some of the differences that I've saw on Channel Eight, you handled them in a great manner. Uh, Todd, I'm, I'm, not to undermine any mayor that's up here, Carmichael, uh, his son Jackie lived right across the street from me growing up, Shay was one of my best friends, too. They all have served well, but in my humble opinion, I think Mayor Davis will go down thus far as one of the best mayors that have ever served this city. Uh, man, I love you, a lot of people love you, I'm gonna end with this, uh, not only Todd and I were, were best friends, but we had a, there was a little trio, and there were several of us that were very best friends, but, uh, we were competitors together, and that was Ted Stevens. Ted Stevens is a colonel in the United States Army now, and you, you couldn't separate the three of us at, at one time, and he just sends this brief little note, Todd. And of course, it couldn't be, he, he's serving. Dear Todd, sixteen years have been a very long time, as you experienced both good times and bad as the mayor of Dylan, there are differences between a politician and a public servant. With official title of mayor aligning with the definition of politician, however, the city of Dylan, those that you influence and encounter over the last fifteen years, sixteen years, without a doubt, know that you were one who served the public. Your intentions were clear as you led with emotion, your successor will have big shoes to fill because you leave the city better than what you inherited. To Lynn, thank you for your support and sacrifice, allowing your husbands to serve the public. Now there will be fewer interruptions of your weekly schedule, creating much deserved time for your boys. Lastly, to Todd, I'm waiting to see what new hobbies you choose, perhaps re-killing or the golf swing or something new, something new, good luck to you, my friend. Uh, Todd, we've all been exposed to a lot of politicians, uh, I've seen some not so admirable, but I've seen some that absolutely put the people first. And there's more of those than I think we give credit to. Uh, Todd didn't care about ego, as you all know, as, as I can say, you, the rest of the council up here doesn't either, didn't care anything about that. He just wanted to serve, and I still think we got great things to look for as he continues to, to serve our city, thank, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And what good friends are.
Tahoe, for you alone. And you know I didn't come here not to talk. Uh, two things, PD Coalition, I am on the board now, um, and the salesman, salesman in me is gonna ask y'all to double, the city does support PD Coalition, I appreciate that financially and, and other ways. Um, if the city has anything, Glenn, Benny, uh, as far as a building, because I think that will be temporary, because it will be sold at some point, so they're gonna need a place. It'd be nice if the city has something, I don't know if they do or not, but you know, just to kinda keep that in mind. Uh, the financial support, I would, I'm gonna ask you to double it, um, that's just a salesman, and you don't, you can say no. I hear it every day, but, um, whatever you did last year, I'm gonna ask you to double it, I'm new to it, so I'm not exactly sure, I think it was a thousand dollars, I think, but I might be off base on that. Um, but, uh, just representing them as a board member, uh, it is a, and Todd knows this, because he's been a, a very big supporter of PD Coalition over the years. And so he knows exactly. he knows exactly how important it is.
She is.
Do I? She's on the board, she is, she's on the board, she is.
I, I've heard that.
Well, you, you have, you have, you're going to hear it at home, too, you know, so, so I'm, as a new board member, I'm asking you to double your efforts, um, and because we really need it, we shouldn't be forty-five out of forty-six, that's, that's really, uh, quite embarrassing, to be honest with you. Um, but, uh, so, on that part, on the mayor part, I want to, uh, extend my gratitude to Todd as being a mayor. Uh, most people don't realize this, Lynn probably don't even realize this, but me and Todd talk, uh, just about every night on Facebook, about something. He hears my complaints and, you know, just, so it's, it's always something going back and forth.
He knows.
Until about ten forty-five, ten eleven, then he drifts away. And I have to pick him up the next day. So, uh, so Todd is very, I've always been very concerned. Um, one bright spot was when we had this past storm, I thought Todd was spot-on on Facebook, keeping everybody informed. Um, I think that was a tremendous, uh, help to the city, uh, when that storm was going on. So, um, he is involved when people don't even know he's involved. Uh, so I appreciate that out of you. I appreciate the fact that you're not going anywhere, uh, you won't be mayor, but Todd's going to continue, and I'm going to push him, um, and he knows this, uh, we've already talked about different things. Um, he's, I'm going to push him to stay involved even, probably more heavily than he was as mayor. Um, he might, you might not see it as much, but, uh, but anyway, Todd, I appreciate everything you've done, I appreciate Lynn, because I know what family, it's, it's, it's a family deal when you do it, so, you know, um, even your kids, uh, you know, and they're, all of them, they've been to my house many times, one was there the other night. So, uh, it's, it's a family deal when you, when you, uh, decide to enter anything, and all of y'all know this, um, as council members, so I do appreciate everything you're doing, um, have done, and will be doing in the future, so, uh, thank you from me, so I appreciate it.
Anything else? Um, New Business Resolution Two Nineteen Proclaim April is Fair Housing Month. Make motion. All favor, opposed, council member of Florida.
Todd, I had a little bit of stuff uncovered tonight, but I'm going to make you show. I'd just feel like for being to get the economic development director to come to our next meeting. And the reason why is to talk about a new restaurant, how we can obtain getting that.
Am I clay you?
Yep.
Okay.
Also, about the digital sign at the wellness center. You got any update on that? I know we're going to get to one of the plazas, we're going to...
That one's first, and then we'll do that one this summer.
All right, Todd, I've been around here ten years, miss you now. We've had a lot of indifference. I realize that, but I want to tell you, I appreciate you. You, when I first came on, you opened your arms up to me, you were good to me, you were a work. And even, even though we had a lot of indifference, we walked out of here, goodnight, Johnny, goodnight, Todd, and, um, you know, we're friends. And, um, I just want to tell you, we're going to miss you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
The only thing I have to say, and, um, don't, the words are not adequate, but I've been on the ride with you for fourteen of those sixteen years, and I probably would not be here if it weren't for you. I watched the way you stepped forward and have been the embodiment and the face and the definition of what a public servant is. You have never put the city of Dillon behind anything else. You've always had the best interest of the city at the bottom of your heart. And you, people don't realize, I don't think the public realizes, how many hours you spend doing this job each week, um, from the public appearances that you have to make on behalf of the city, from answering to the media, to answering questions about wild dogs or trash not being picked up. Um, it's a, it's a thankless job, and it's not, the salary is certainly not adequate for the job. And, uh, but the job has never been about the salary for you or about you, it's been about the city. And I just want to say thank you. Um, you are, you really are, you've been the face of Dillon and the voice of Dillon, and you've represented as well.
I want to thank the folks of, of citizens of Dillon County for letting me, uh, be mayor of District One again in the city of Dillon. And, uh, Todd, he, he's, he's signed me for sixteen years, minus three months. But, but, he helped me a lot ways in that, in that, in that situation, and if it wasn't him, I'd probably be right by now. So, I just want to thank him.
I'm going to get my slate for city business, and you set all... Um, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
I'm good, I just want to thank you for the years, and thank you also, Miss Connie, for your eight years, I enjoyed sitting beside you, and you shared...
I done you that!
If it wasn't for her, I would never be able to sign anything. She always had to take me there and thank me, so thank you, thank you.
I just want to thank you for serving with him also, and I really enjoy serving with him, he's easy to work with. And I do have a few complaints, though. Um, Maple Park, uh, a young man had called me regarding the trash cans, and I think I brought this, uh, this a couple of years ago, and they're just too small, that park, they're old, I think they're just, from the beginning, a little brick and...
We put some roll carts out there.
Roll carts?
Yes, man, like you have at your house. But they, they have walked away, I guess.
Maybe, because, because the person just called me, I remember long ago, just maybe like last week. And also, um, the same house that I've showed you guys on my phone with the trash in the yard, they picked up the boxes and things, but I, I bet, I've never seen a living person living there, but all of a sudden, I began to see children there, and they're playing in the front yard, and that street, uh, that yard is close to the street, and they're small kids, and they're playing with grocery carts. And if you can picture that intersection, it's the church on one corner, the field, and then that house, and I've seen a grocery cart across the street in the churchyard, I'm quite sure it rolls across there. Traffic is very fast through there, and, um, I'm just seeing an accident waiting to happen, even with the children or with the toys that they're playing with, sometimes those grocery carts are trash cans for them, sometimes they're toys for them. And in the backyard, you just need to ride by them, it's, it's awful.
That's on South Ninth?
Ninth and, Ninth and, I mean, uh, what is it? Ninth and Earl's.
Ninth and Earl's. Those, those are the rural houses right there in the apartment complex. Okay.
And, um, and, uh, I, I want to thank you, Glenn, for, um, the ballpark, for all those that's been a thank you. They, they have twenty-two teams in that league now, and I think that's, um, a great number of young people that they're giving, uh, time for activities. And boys, we win and winning, our teams, twenty-two, and they, they, they lead that field, and they appreciate you for getting it ready. He says that you're getting it ready for them.
We're working on it.
Yes, he says that you're working on it, so he appreciates that. And I enjoy working with all of you all, and I'll miss you all, and it's been, um, a fast eight years, and if you need me in the future, um, I'll just call on you. And my pet peeve were to improve the, uh, the city, and that's why I, uh, I'm always looking for, um, old houses that need to be torn down, because I'm looking for, that my, my pet peeve was to improve the look of the city. So, thank you all very much.
I'm going to take about three minutes. Um, to start with Connie, she served as my mayor pro temp for most of my years, I think. Um, I called her, she'd always stand in for me. I didn't want to go to an event, I just didn't want to go, something was up, she always stood in, I thank you for that, she's been a great asset to the city. Number one, I miss her. Betsy in the hair on hometown TVA, thank you. Y'all have always been board and fair to me, board and fair to the city, do a great job covering your town, you're commended for it, every city has that. Uh, got a great press in our, our town, uh, thank you for it. The Grants and Main Street, just keep pushing, it's a process, just start and look, come around, knew it wouldn't be fast, it's a process that's going to continue, I know y'all will continue it, and if I could do anything to help in that regard, use me. I counted the other day, so no twelve by twelves, a hundred and forty-four, yeah, four more years, sixteen, that's a hundred and ninety-two meetings, I never missed one. Um, I think we missed two due to hurricanes, probably.
Well, we moved them.
Moved, probably another twenty-five special council called me, it was me, but, uh, always took it serious, always. To my friends, Steve and Rodney, all of you are, uh, you're a rich man, and you got friends. I'm a rich man, in that regard. Couldn't have better friends in my lifetime, my childhood, home in my belt ride, they stand with me firm, at, and always, and I thank you for that, thank you for being here. City personnel, I think I go through every meeting, and I brag on our city personnel, because every one of them back there, Artie, Bert, Keith, David, Janet, Benny, and the rest of them, could go anywhere in the state, and they have been approached. They could get any job they want to get, but they stay right here. That's why they don't get us in trouble, they always, you know, they don't go and do things out of impulse, they're always checking, going to proper procedure, and doing it right the first time. They make mistakes like everybody, but you don't hear about them much. Just fantastic in what they do, and that's why I'm going to miss them a lot, but they are true professionals in every sense of the word. Been so impressed with every one of them. Get a fire call, Keith and his crew's there in five minutes. Get a water leak, look at the hurricane, that's all you got to say to Artie's crew and Bert's crew. Downtown and the housing, Benny, it's just second to none. Bridget's going right in the same direction. It's an outstanding group. Council, it's been a pleasure serving with this council. Y'all are the city of Dillon, represent, uh, you know, to a tilt, you do fantastic for your constituents. Johnny at my end, you know, he and I have had issues, but you need that, the voice of dissension. You don't need a unanimous vote all the time, and he's, he's been, you know, Johnny's come to my office before, and I hope he continues to do it. He's grown in his council, he's continuing to grow on, and, uh, to all of them, thank you. Lastly, to my family, thank you for putting up with me, it takes a family to be in this business, and you all go in it together, that's what I told my dad when I ran for mayor the first time, I said, you mean it, too?
You never had the right speech, said you. She said that when you ran the first time.
Yeah, I did.
You never made a speech.
Jack, thank you for all your service. Uh, I can't say enough about Glenn White. Every time I think of Glenn, I just say, he's steady. I just want to be calm, he's steady, stays out depressed, he, he calls me sometimes and, don't put that out there, or don't do this, you know, think about where you do this, or you might consider this. He's always been the man for the job for the city, there can't be another, it just wouldn't be right.
I'm not retiring you all.
Uh, y'all three mayoral candidates, it takes a lot of guts to step up to it, every one of you. Convenient for doing it, there ain't going to be but one, but at least you rank, and we love your city. And the next mayor, whatever I can do to help you get active, if you call, and I'll be glad to help you any way I can. And with that, I love you, I love the people, and people, thank you so much for putting me in office, I had one election, my first one, unopposed to the rest. You either thought I was doing something right, or think it won't run up. But with that, thank you so much, it's been a pleasure, and with that, stand adjourned.